Permit under 174 17.1, 174 17, and 174 33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure in the detached garage located in the R3 zoning district, map 109 parcel four, Mashpee, Mass., continued from May 22, 2024, and July 10, 2024 hearings. Counselor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Crane from Bryan Anderson. I did file a letter requesting a continuance of this hearing till August 14th, as I am still waiting on the architectural plans from the architect.
Charlie, would you like to read that letter, please?
Sure.
The letter is dated July 19, 2024, to Ron Bonvy, Chairman, from Christopher Crane. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for July 24, 2024 be continued until August 14, 2024, as the applicant is still waiting on the architectural plans. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Chris Crane. Chris, do you believe that you will be able to make that date with the plans?
Yes, and I will impress upon the architect that that be...
Please, because if we're not, let's take it off and bring it back, right?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. So can I get a motion to accept said letter in extension? All right. The motion relative to 37 Amy Brown Road is to continue the hearing scheduled for July 24, 2024, until August 14, 2024, awaiting architectural plans. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Because you have something to sign, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So Bob, I'm sorry you didn't have much interaction on that.
It's fine.
We'll let you, we'll go, you can go with the second one. How's that?
Did a good job, though.
I did a good job.
Very good. I was impressed.
He said yes.
Thank you. So sitting on the next one, we'll be, we're gonna have Bob again. How's that? The four regular members are Bob.
Not done.
Oh, along with Bob. I'm just seeing who's gonna sit. We haven't started.
Jumping over who you are.
You're gonna move them.
Busy.
He's a monkey casket.
Busy jumper.
We've got a couple.
24.
I have a problem. That pen is not doing well.
I have it.
From mine?
Seems as though she gives me so many things to sign at these meetings.
That's very useful.
There you go. So sitting on the next one, as I stated, will be the four regular members along with Bob. Charlie, would you like to read the next new hearing? The first new hearing.
New hearings?
Yes. 14 Wags Road petitioner David Hirsch with EJ Prescott, Inc., EJP, requests a modification under 174 24 C2, 174 25 G6 of the zoning bylaws and the existing special permits, SP 2020-56, SP 04-26, for a change of use to wholesale sales with indoor and outdoor storage of waterworks materials on property located in the I-1, C-1, and R3 zoning districts, map 81 parcel 6, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record PMP Realty LLC. So in the interest of being totally transparent, I do do some business with Prescott, and I feel that I am not in conflict, so I don't have a problem sitting on the board. I've also looked at, years ago, some time ago, I actually looked at the building a couple of times. Didn't make any offers, no, it was my interest. And so having said that, who will be submitting? If you could give your name and your involvement with the project, that'd be great.
My name is David Hirsch. I'm the New England Operations Manager for EJ Prescott.
So if you'd like to present what you're, what you'd like to do and your intentions, please.
Sure. We currently have a, we, the wholesale store is in the industrial park. We share the building with the water district. There was a building built next door, so we're moving, losing our yard space, so we're trying to move the building to Wags Road, continue that business. It's already been an existing business in Mashpee for 25 years.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, I guess. So are you making any change? Well, why don't we do this?
Just a change of use.
Yeah.
No adding on.
No.
Yeah. So...
In addition, the yard space is already cleared.
I just wanna follow format. Any letters from any agencies or anyone? No, we have comments. Let me go first. Conservation, no comment. Okay. Board of Health comments. There were two received, but the earlier one is no longer replicable. So the only one in effect is the comment that I have received, 723, 2024, relative to 14 Wags Road, Board of Health, wholesale only. That was their only comment. Okay. And that's the only letters we have? I have nothing else. So board questions?
I was just curious what was in there before.
When I was in, it was a vacant building, great fire system in there. It was totally vacant.
It was a bolt storage, wasn't it?
It was originally built as a bolt storage facility that I was...
Yeah, they came here and it was approved.
Beautiful building. It was overbuilt as far as I was concerned.
Fifteen years ago.
The sprinkler system isn't as incredible. You're right.
I mean, the fire main in there was huge. I was looking around. It was, like I said, I was interested in the building. This was some time ago. Very well-built building.
Didn't someone else come here before to try to use up for something else?
I don't know.
After the bolt facility, it was purchased to be a grow facility.
What?
It was purchased to be a marijuana grow facility.
Yeah, it was a cannabis. Yeah, I remember that coming here. Yeah.
That's who we bought.
That's why, that's why I was asked, because I didn't know if they went in and then they were out. It's kind of irrelevant for what you're doing. I was just curious.
Any other board questions?
Yeah, it's gonna be wholesale only, no retail?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
You're just taking what you have now over the industrial park and moving it there?
And moving it there, correct.
You're not making changes to the parking lot, other than you, it looks like you're, are you gonna add to landscaping? What are you gonna do outside, anything?
We restored the outside pavement. That was, they disturbed, but it's already returned back to normal. We're not making any changes at all.
So it's a change of use specifically? You're gonna do some work inside, but that's between you and the bill inspector, I would think, and pretty straightforward.
And that's just one wall we're adding.
Okay, yes, Sharon.
I thought when the marijuana was here, we had an issue or there was discussion about this dirt road.
I don't remember that, so your recollection's better than mine.
Yeah. I don't know. Are they, can they still use the dirt road?
I thought there was a fence around the whole property.
Yeah, it's a paved road and it is fenced in all the way around.
Yeah.
So how is it zoned now? Industrial, use only?
It's I-1, C-1.
Commercial.
C-1 in R3.
Residential.
It might be located in the I-1, C-1 in R3 zoning districts.
So let's see if there's a zone line. Zone line.
There's a residential right there.
Here's your zone line right here. So the residential looks like it's off the site per se. It's on the site, but it's not included in the layout, like...
A corner or something, maybe?
See here's zone here.
That's commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, the residential doesn't even...
Yeah.
The residential's right here.
Yeah, so you'd have residential here, residential here, and it looks like you've got a zone line here, and I think this is industrial.
And that's commercial.
Exactly.
So the building is in what zone?
I would rather have the applicant say, it seems to me it's 90% in the industrial zone, but...
That's what, as far as I'm aware, that's, that's correct.
Looks like a small piece might be in C-1, and it looks like most of the residential is off. It's on the plan, but it's off. It's outside of the fence perimeter. That's my guess.
Well, question. Is, is there an issue at all with changing use from industrial to wholesale, David?
I don't believe so. I mean...
I mean, what, what are the differences?
I don't know.
You're limited to what you can do in industrial.
It's a special permit. John, it's a special permit either way. Doesn't matter if it's industrial or commercial. So it's, it's just a change of use.
And they're modifying actually the special perm by the change of use.
And it is the only building on that street.
Right.
Any other board questions? Mr. Morris, do you have any input?
I have no issues at all.
As I stated, audience, anyone in the audience have any statements? Yes, sir, please come up. If you could give your name and tell me what your location or address is.
Three minutes. Good evening. My name is George Boris. I am here really to learn a little bit more about this development. I live at Deacrossing Condominiums, which abuts this property, and I'm on the Board of Trustees, so I really came to pick up information of how different that area may become. One of the big concerns we have is Wags Road right now is a gated road, and it is the only other way we can get out of our property. So if there was an emergency, the fire department can open that gate to let, you know, you know, vehicles in to, to do what needs to be done. Also, we have had problems in the past where like a semi-trailer at Ace Hardware kind of was blocking the road. And so again, this is like an emergency exit, and I'm just wondering what the, these people that, you know, with the company, do they plan on changing that? Because right now, when people go into the, the stores there and on the second floor, you, it basically goes down, it's a dead end. And we're not hoping that they want to take that fence down, that gate down, and end up having cars go through there, you know, freely.
Well, why don't we find out?
It is a really busy area. There's lots of, you know, businesses up in there. There's kids that are there, and so we, we just want to make sure that that's the plan.
I think one of the big questions is, and if you could ask, answer this too, who owns Wags Road? Would you own Wags Road?
As far as I can tell, yes.
I believe Wags Road is really a driveway, right?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna give you...
It's private.
Excuse me?
Yeah, it's private.
So I'm gonna give you a little input. This is a guess, but I think I'm pretty... So Wags Road is owned by whoever's gonna buy this, or own this property. So your passage on Wags Road is predicated on their willingness to allow you to pass. So I'm just saying you may want to have a conversation with them, because in their infinite wisdom, if somewhere down the road they chose to not allow you to pass on their driveway...
Do you currently have a plan for that gated area?
My understanding is the town has an easement for that gate. We don't have a key to that gate. Our department only does. No, we do not plan on, we want to...
So...
Our company as well.
I, I don't, I see just a fire lane statement. There's no easement on this plan.
The access as well was created, there used to be an easement through that property, and when this was proposed back in 2004, the owners at the time worked out something with the power company for them to move their easement around the property to access. So the power company actually created a new road, and that gave part of their access to get through.
That's it.
And it's also fire access as well.
Right, yeah, proposed electric easement. There it is.
Yeah, we, we don't want the traffic on that road.
Yeah, because I don't know, I don't know your company, but I mean, it sounds like you have some big trucks that are coming in. It's not, you know, it's not just little plumbing supplies. It sounds like it's some pretty good size, you know, waterwork stuff.
It is large. Four, seven to five, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, that's right.
And so most of the stuff will be beyond, fences in pretty bad shape, I guess, up there right now.
Yeah, it works.
So you're gonna be basically behind the fence.
Correct.
So will there be a lot of like big trucks and stuff coming in and out?
Mostly pickup trucks, like wire delivery trucks. It's not a truck or trailer.
Okay.
I'm not saying no, like take out a truck might come and deliver something like that, but it's not gonna be a...
It would seem to me, sir, if I would make this recommendation to you, you may want to sit down with them and understand what they're willing to do for you, only because I don't, I'm only speaking as one member of this board. I happen to be chair, but I'm only one member when it comes to voting, right? They've got a driveway coming into their property. You've been using their driveway. I would sit down with them and have that conversation. I don't see an easement on this plan that shows it.
They're not, they're not currently using the driveway. It's locked closed, but the whole...
No, but I'm saying that he's calling an emergency access. He just said that in the event that there's a truck over at the hardware store, they may come around this way, correct?
Yeah.
That's what he said. And if that's the case, what you're saying is, hey, in the event that there's a truck blocking our other access, we're gonna go down their driveway.
An emergency vehicle.
No, no, no. He didn't say, he's saying them.
You're talking about the residents would come down Wags Road if there's a truck blocking the entrance of...
There's no, there would be no way out for anybody.
So you're saying that if you were driving out of your development and someone was blocking your other access, you would then come this way, correct?
Well, again, it would only be in an emergency because I, we don't have a key to it.
What?
The door's locked, the resident's gonna get...
All right. So you would have to, it would have to be an emergency, you would have to go to the fire department or something and get a key?
Yeah.
All right, because you weren't clear on that.
It's not our personal gate. We do not have access. It is a, you know, a fight department.
They can't block that road.
So it's gonna remain the same. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's...
There you go.
What did you just say?
It's gonna remain the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if the, if people are feeling like we need to do something, if these, if you guys will give me a code or something, we'll get in touch and maybe...
Yeah. It would seem to me, I'm highly recommended, outside of this meeting, it seems to me they're being very open and they want to work with you. You want to work with them. I think it can be worked out, but it's something outside of this meeting, I would say.
And just for peace of mind, as one board member, I own property in the industrial park. I've watched, and I've been there for a long time. I've watched how they run their operations. Very organized, very neat.
It would seem to me, I'm highly recommended, outside of this meeting, it seems to me they're being very open and they want to work with you, you want to work with them. I think it can be worked out, um, but it's something outside of this meeting, I would say.
And just for peace of mind, as one board member, I own property in the industrial park. I've watched, and I've been there for a long time, I've watched how they run their operations. Very organized, very neat. They don't have stuff everywhere and trucks blocking the road, because if they were blocking the road coming into industrial park, I'd have an issue, and I've never, in fifteen years, have never had an issue with the way they run their business. And that's just as one member, my experience, just for peace of mind.
So gentlemen, would you be willing to sit down with this, this gentleman here and see how you can work together?
Absolutely.
Great, good. So that's, that's on the record. Just sit down. There's no guarantees, but at least you're gonna sit down with him, all right?
Okay.
All right, so anyone else in the audience having, thank you, sir, very much? And he did give his name, Arianne, right? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
You might want to call the fire department, talk to the fire chief about it, too.
Yeah.
You might want to give a call to the fire department and talk to one of the chief or the deputy chief about that situation, what is the protocol? If there's an emergency and for some reason by Ace Hardware, I don't know why they would block the road, they have no right to block the road, they have tractor trailers coming in to deliver, and people drive by them all day long, so I think that's a phone call for them.
Yeah, I would agree that you should call about it.
You can't block that road with everybody you have living up there.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Any other board questions?
Nope.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reference the application, please.
Okay, uh, motion relative to fourteen Wags Road. Petitioner David Hirsch with EJ Prescott, Inc., EJP, requests a modification under one seventy-four twenty-four C-two, one seventy-four twenty-five G-six of zoning bylaws and the existing special permits, SP twenty twenty fifty-six, SP oh four twenty-six, for a change of use to wholesale sales with indoor and outdoor storage of waterworks materials on property located in the I-1, C-1 and R-3 zoning districts. MAP eighty-one parcel six, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record PMP Realty LLC with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit modification. Two, original site plan prepared by BSS Design dated January twenty-nine, two thousand and four. Three, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health comments, and that the use will be wholesale only. Any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds that the modi, number five, the board finds that the modification is consistent with the use under one seventy-four twenty-four C-two, one seventy-four twenty-five G-six of the zoning bylaws and the existing special permits, SP twenty twenty fifty-six, SP oh four twenty-six.
Do we have a pub, we had a board health comment, right?
Uh, yes, it was wholesale only.
Okay, good, it's in there. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Easy enough.
That building's been vacant for a while, hasn't it?
Yep.
Several years, I think. How many years?
Probably four or five years.
Wow.
That cannabis company never, the grow company never went in there, did they?
They got a permit to put an addition on, and they dug the footers to put the foundation in, but that's where they stopped. They never disturbed the outside of the building or anything lovely.
It'll be great to see it getting some use.
Yeah, you got a lot of space up there. It's nice.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Here we go. There you go. I'm gonna get a stamp on my name on it. Is that it? Just two? Perfect, loving it. Okay. Charlie, would you like to read the next new hearing to the record, please? Eighty-seven Lighthouse.
Hey, Gus.
Take it.
Next on the agenda is eighty-seven Lighthouse Lane. Owner Barbara Pasilio requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen, one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a farmer's porch addition. Extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R-three zoning district, MAP ninety, parcel forty-eight, Mashpee, Mass.
So I didn't, I did not state, but we'll be sitting on this, will be four regular members and Charlie, how's that?
You're all the same, mate.
I don't think they're all the same.
I think it's a smaller version.
Oh. Okay. Why don't I trade with you, because you're looking at... So if you could give your name, sir, and your involvement in the project, please.
Uh, yes, good evening. My name's Bill Lockwood with Lockwood Architects from onset. I am, uh, the architect for Barbara Pasilio, who is sitting right here to my left. And, um, we're here tonight to see about, um, getting a spot, a finding regarding the setback to Jackbon Terrace, uh, which would be a, a reduction in, in the distance of the pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, we also are within the overall purview of the Conservation Commission, who we have been before to receive, um, a negative determination, RDA. Um, and I think those are the principal issues, but the purpose of the project is to create a, um, a farmer's porch on the west landward side of the existing house, which was built, um, a number of years ago.
If I may ask a quick question, and I'm sure board members will ask the same question, when you were calculating lot coverage, or when Falmouth Engineering was calculating lot coverage, so I see the non-wetland portion of the lot, so I'm trying to understand your lot coverage. So existing, so I see, they did do it right. So eleven point one percent non-wetland portion of the lot, and then they went and said existing and proposed, but it's saying... So they did take the one thirty-five out of the, out of the calculations, it looks like, and it's going from eleven point one to twelve point nine, am I correct?
I gotta take that as, yes.
Okay.
So what's the amount of square footage on, of the wetlands?
Well, the way they did it, they just took it, the engineers took it out of their calculations, and they're not really telling us what the wetland calculation is. They're saying the upland is this, and that's the percentage before and the percentage after, which by our new finding, that is really the way to do it, but they didn't ever told us what the wetland portion was, correct, David?
Yeah, but it's kinda, it's irrelevant.
It's really moved, because the bottom line is, the way they calculate it's eleven point one to twelve point nine.
God, no. It's not even, yeah.
It's not even an issue.
Not an issue.
Not an issue. I'm trying to understand what the red line is.
Um, best as I can understand, that's a seventy-five foot setback off of the coastal bank.
Okay.
So the whole house is in there.
Yeah, so the whole house.
Yes.
So then...
Are there stairs going down to the dock? It looks like it drops from what, eighteen down to zero, basically?
Looks like it's, so it's previously approved dock, does that mean it's also previously built?
Uh, it is, it is in fact a, a fact. It is there now, yes.
Yeah, so if you look where your right hand is, there's a dock there with stairs to it.
Yeah, but I don't see stairs going down, do I?
Uh, no, the, uh, there are stairs going down off the rear deck, um, we're proposing stairs off of the proposed front porch. Um, but the, it just goes down slope, the grade slopes down, and they walk down the grade.
There's no stairs going down the slope?
Uh, there, there are not, no.
So there, Jonathan, you asked what the wetland portion was. It actually depicts what the non-wetland is, so we could do the math easy. Under parcel forty-eight, it says fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four square feet of non-wetland. So the total square feet is eighteen thousand one, subtract the fourteen, five, and there's your wetlands. So it's about thirty-five hundred, four thousand square.
Got it. Okay.
Is the shed in compliance with sizes of the shed? Do you know?
Five, seven.
The shed is about an eight by twelve shed, um, and it, it, it's there. It also is a fact.
So it would be probably pre-existing anyway?
Yeah.
Non-conforming. If, and it looks like it's conforming, but even more.
Yeah.
Okay, so that being said, let's keep going now, yes, so, uh, letters, agency letters?
Two.
Would you read them, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Board of Health comments, uh, eighty-seven Lighthouse Lane. Board of Health, no increase in habitable space, no comment. And Conservation Department comments dated July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Resource areas buffer zone to coastal bank. Request for determination of applicability, RDA, permit application for construction of farmer's porch on front of dwelling, received a unanimous vote, a negative determination. Farmer's porch is proposed in existing gravel driveway layout with mitigation plantings at two to one ratio will increase native plantings in the buffer zone in the resource area.
Both favorable. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay, anyone in the audience in, uh, having to state and reference this application? Okay, thank you. David, what do you have to say? Anything?
Nah, I have no issues with the project at all.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to the board.
Nothing.
Zero.
You guys, ladies and gentlemen, all set?
Yeah.
Fine, numbers work.
Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to reference the application, please.
Motion relative to eighty-seven Lighthouse Lane. Owner Barbara Pasilio requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a farmer's porch addition. Extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R-three zoning district, MAP ninety, parcel forty-eight, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws forty A, section six. Two, plot plan. Proposed farmer's porch eighty-seven Lighthouse Lane, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Lockwood Architects LLC. Plan date, May thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Plan scale, one inch equals twenty feet. Prepared by Falmouth Engineering. Stamped and signed by Michael Borselli, civil engineer number three five oh five four, and Gary Labrie, land surveyor, number four oh oh three nine. Farmer's porch addition, number three. Eighty-seven Lighthouse Lane, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Barbara Pasilio. Dates eight twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, one twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, and five one, twenty twenty-four. Drawing number eighty-one, project number one three five eight. Prepared and signed by Lockwood Architects, number five 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 zero. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to Conservation and Board of Health departments. Number five, any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. And number six, the board finds that the proposed project under one seventy-four seventeen, one seventy-four thirty-three is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, sir?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You are welcome. You are welcome. Okay, sitting in the next one will be four regular with Bob and Charlie, would you like, I think we're all set, right? Charlie, would you like to read the next one-twelve Captain's Row into the record?
We'll go. Next is... Excuse me, we are Captain's Row, are we?
I believe we are.
Okay. One hundred and twelve Captain's Row. Owner Robert Valetti requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to remove an existing pool-dash spa and replace it with a new, slightly larger pool spa on the same existing patio on property located in an R-three zoning district, MAP ninety-six, parcel seventeen, Mashpee, Mass.
So, please give your name and...
Members, for the record, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group, representing the owner, Mr. Valada, the Valada Family Irrevocable Trust. Um, as mentioned, we are looking to replace an existing spa with a new spa in the backyard facing the water. Uh, we have been to Conservation Commission, and we have had approval from the Conservation Commission. Um, the, you'll see in the pictures that I provided, it's not really something I can provide architectural plans of, because it's a, basically a very large hot tub. But, um, what I did is I took photographs of the existing, and included those in our submission, and you should all have a copy. Then also, that's the photographs you have of the existing conditions, and we're proposing a swim spa, a swimly, uh, a little bit larger than that, with a new nine by nineteen, um, to the exterior walls of the new structure. Um, the building, it's like the field, there was a structure, so we are counting it towards lot coverage. Lot coverage here is, with the new regulations dealing with flood zones being a wetland, the lot size goes down from eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six square feet to six thousand eight hundred and nineteen square feet. So we now have eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet of wetlands, as the flood zone is now considered a wetland. That changes the lot coverage numbers dramatically, um, and we are, we had thirty-eight point eight percent lot coverage.
What was that number again, please?
Three eight point eight, and we're going to forty point one percent. The numbers are staggering because the...
But you are going from thirty-eight percent to forty percent.
Yes. But the, um, those numbers are very unusual for me to come in front of any board with numbers like that, but no other town considers a flood zone a wetland.
You, you'd have to talk to a judge who, who told us we'd need to calculate it that way.
So, um, so that, that's why we're here. We're looking to replace the existing spa with a swim spa. Um, so we have Conservation approval. We are pushing it further back from the coastline, not by much, but we are pushing it back, and we are pushing it from the property line.
Does the board understand that? That we're, that they're increasing lot coverage?
Yes.
Well, why don't we continue down the road here? Um, letters from agencies, Charlie?
Let me just pull them up.
Oh, take your time, take your time. You don't need any more pressure than you've been under, Charlie.
I don't need you hobbling out of here.
Okay, we have... Conservation Department comments dated July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, for one hundred and twelve Captain's Row. Uh, resource areas, riverfront, buffer zone to the Mashpee River, and buffer zone to coastal bank. RDA permit application for installation of a swim spa in place of existing impervious patio, received a negative determination with a unanimous vote. Existing area is hardscape patio with no expansion of hardscape footprint and native plantings on the coastal bank. And relative to the, uh, the Board of Health, uh, for Captain's Row, no comment.
That's the exception. So now I'm gonna open up to board comments.
Okay, um... Unprecedented that you want to go to forty percent. What can you remove to not go up in lot coverage?
From your existing, I think it's thirty-five percent, so you need to cut something out.
Yeah, it's thirty-eight percent.
Well, thirty-eight.
The reason that the number is so, such allowed at two percent, which is a lot on the...
It doesn't matter if it's a half a percent.
Aye.
This board historically has taken the stance, unless there's inconceivable reasoning, we do not go with an expansion of a pre-existing or a non-conformity on lot coverage. So you're at thirty-eight, and we understand why you had, why you're at thirty-eight, we understand completely, but this board historically has not allowed, in your case, to go beyond thirty-eight. completely, but this board historically has not allowed, in your case, to go beyond 38.
Probably for the last 10 to 15 years, we have not allowed...
And I fully understand that, I fully understand that.
An increase in lot coverage above.
But the ball has changed completely.
We understand that, too.
Because before the new regulations, we complied with lot coverage.
You what?
We complied with lot coverage before the new regulations for flood zone.
Do you have the calculations without the upwind, like with the 40,000 square feet? That's what traditionally this board looks for, and if it's under 20%, you would...
Yeah, I don't see it on there.
Allow that.
That would certainly help.
What calculation you looking for? What, the percentage of the 18,000?
The way other towns, as you depicted it, have done it.
With the lot size of 18,000...
If you can give me one minute, I can give you that answer.
I'm happy to give you that one minute, sir.
If we can have that, it would be helpful.
Can I just make one suggestion, though? For such a small amount of lot coverage, because I see this deck here, I don't know the square footage of it, is there any way to reduce some of the size of that deck to get you to...back to your 38, whatever it was, 38.1 whatever?
It's...it would be very difficult to reduce because of the way it's constructed.
I can't see it on the pictures, that's...
Yeah, it's a very...
I've probably overlooked it.
...large structure from the size of the wall.
I've probably overlooked it, but the board generally likes the old...the old way.
That is correct, David, that is correct. I think it may help your cause. Take your time.
Or remove the shed. That'll do it.
Remove the shed. Okay? That'll do it.
Or get a smaller shed.
Possibly. I don't know how much...
It's only a 10 by 12, it's a pretty small shed.
Yeah, it looks tiny in the picture.
And I didn't...I didn't want to be speaking while you're doing it.
I appreciate it, I would bask at any straw I can as well, but it's a pretty small shed right now.
We actually want to see those numbers on this plan, wouldn't we?
Yes, we would.
It would be at 14%.
So 14 before and what's...or what before and what after, using the, let's say, the old method? Total lot size, before and after, please.
14 and a half percent.
So you'd go from 14 to 14 and a half?
Yes.
How would the board like to handle this?
Are we supposed to handle that with the new regulations?
I'd like to see the numbers on here, rather than just...I mean, it's not that I don't trust you, but I want to see him...
I fully understand that.
This is for the record.
Does it make sense that we do the following? Here's my recommendation. If BSC Group would use the old computation and put it on their document, then we will make a decision. It seems like, I'm just asking the question of the board, if in fact it is 14 to 14 and a half percent...
Yes.
Is the board less concerned?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So I would recommend that you ask for an extension, okay? Because right now you're teetering, ask for an extension. Go back to BSC and put the old way also on your plan, and hopefully it'll depict 14 to 14 and a half, and you just heard what the board said.
Just so you know, I am BSC, that is my stamp on the plan, so I will be the one doing the calculations again.
Well, I only say BSC because...is it your stamp on this plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would gladly go back and do it, and if the board, if that's what it takes for the board, more than happy to do so.
What about the Conservation comments?
They've already approved it, they gave a negative determination.
Right.
They were okay.
They're fine. So if you would just correct your plan, it sounds like you're probably...your numbers are correct. It seems like you'll be okay.
Jonathan's got another question.
Oh, Jonathan, I'm sorry?
Do you have a setback question?
Well, I also have to go to the audience, et cetera, so go ahead.
So, you're going from a hot tub to an in-ground pool?
It's a swim pool, no, it sits on top of the ground, it's still...it's just a little bit longer, there's...you can swim in it, and it's a...there's a tide that's pushed in that tub. It's just a big hot tub.
Okay. In the winter, I assume you're gonna drain that?
Correct, that was one of the requirements of the Conservation Commission.
If needed, swim spa will be drained by vacuum truck and will not be drained to any manner of the site. Conservation Commission approval, May 24.
That answers my question.
Let me, if I may, David, what do you have for input? If any?
You know, I don't have much of an issue with this.
They removed that by a foot or two.
Audience, anyone in the audience have any questions, issues with this application? Okay, then I'm gonna come back to the board. It seems to me the board would be okay with this application if, in fact, on that plan it depicts clearly that it's 14% prior to and 14 and a half under the old method, understanding that it's 38 to 40 using the new method.
Yeah, we've actually been asking for this information for what, two years?
Yeah.
And I think you've been here the past two years?
I have not.
Yeah, maybe someone else from your company.
I would have...I would have added that on.
It's okay, so if you...if you could follow those guidelines, it would seem as though when you come back, you shouldn't have an issue. If you could ask for an extension, we'd probably be willing to grant it.
Just so I'm clear, the number is based on the entire lot size that's on the record plan.
Right, which would be, you just stated, 14 to 14 and a half is what you think it is, sounds like this board would not have a problem with that, and using the new correct method, you need to make sure that's on the plan, I believe it already is, it's 38 to 40, correct?
Yes.
All right, those facts, it seems like this board will be fine with, but it needs to be clearly depicted on your plan, and it seems like we'll be fine with it. So when is our next availability?
August 14th.
So could you ask for...would you be willing to ask for an extension until August 14th?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for an extension to August 14th for the next available here?
How would the board like to handle this extension, please?
Let's do it.
You'd like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept his request to continue to August 14th.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Yep, all right. Paperwork? You need him to sign an extension, Marianne, before he leaves?
Does he need to have setbacks from the property line?
Well, then you should...we should...all right, excuse me one second. We have a question from one of the board members, we want to make sure she's satisfied before you leave.
I do have the number two.
What's your question?
It's two feet, you can see that right, written right up here.
Two feet existing?
The...
I believe this looks like he's moving closer to the property line.
Her question is, are you...are you creating a...more of a non-conformity?
The wall that's around the current one is closer to the property line than the wall that's around the future one.
So you are going further away from the property line with the future?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Does he need to sign something? So you need to sign something before you leave, please?
Jonathan was asking if the wall is a structure, I said it depends on how tall it is.
How tall is the wall? I believe it's 48 inches, I think it's over four feet.
And that's...David, you wouldn't consider that a structure if it's four feet or less?
Okay, we're looking at the wall in the back, wall one foot from existing location.
The other word says proposed plantings. Rebuild wall one foot back from existing location. But behind the...
Yeah, I mean, it's already non-conforming.
Yeah, but the question was...
What it may change is computations, and then the board may be not satisfied. We don't want him to come back and say, oh, it's not 14, it's not, you know, it's not what I depicted it was.
If the building inspector tells me that the wall needs to be less than four feet, so it's not considered a structure, the wall would be less than four feet, so it's not considered a structure.
Is that correct, David, four feet or less?
Yeah, I don't understand what's the difference.
The question is, is the wall a structure? Is he moving closer?
At what point do you consider a wall a structure?
I suppose, I suppose if it's four feet from the footing to the top.
Okay.
But actually, you know, we always...we want that setback from the wall.
Well, we've had that issue when people have tried to build patios, they have a six-foot wall supporting it, we changed it years ago, now that's a structure now.
Yeah.
If it was a two-foot wall supporting a brick patio, it's not a structure. When you build something that big, you get around building a deck, it's a fine line, that's people are trying to screw around.
I would recommend, sir, to have a meeting with the zoning enforcement officer, and if your computations change because of his determination, you might want to amend your shed or something to make sure that your computations remain correct.
Right, if the wall...if the wall would happen to be considered a structure, it's approximately 26 square feet. With this calculation, it would go from 14.51 to 14.505.
I can only tell you that you got an opinion from this board based on what you told us. If that goes up, this board may make a different decision. If I were you?
It's a nine-inch wall by 19 feet, so it'd be less than 20 feet.
Exactly, it's miniscule.
Minimal.
It'd be minimal, yeah, because we go by the width of the wall and the length.
I wouldn't...if I were you, I would hold to the numbers that you presented to the board. I think, if you can, very important.
It becomes a structure when he has to inspect it, because it now has to be designed by a structural engineer. Gets over a certain size, a structural engineer has to stamp it. If it doesn't need a structural engineer to stamp it, it's not a structure.
There you go.
And that trigger is four feet exposed, so we will make sure...
No, it's four feet from the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall, and even if you cover it in.
Yeah, it could be six feet under the ground and up four feet.
All right, it's in the bill of code.
All right, if we use...if we use interlock and block, we don't need to go down four feet from footing?
Yeah, probably, they're engineered as well.
Okay, they're engineered. All right, I'll give you a call.
Okay, no problem.
I think it can be worked out, but I would recommend spending the time trying to work it out.
I will do that, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, good catch.
Thank you.
In the nick of time, mind you.
She is the vice chair.
Yeah, you know what? Pick up the paper.
You know what, I just copied the one above.
It took you so long.
Yeah.
Hey, Ron.
You signed that twice?
It's not February, it's July. Same with you, Scott. Same with me.
Living in the past.
Because I copied above.
You guys, if I jumped off a cliff... No, you had me thinking. Oh, so whatever, it's close enough.
To see if you were paying attention, because you said you weren't paying attention.
He's always paying attention.
Ronnie makes the mistake and everybody falls.
You better not fall on the others.
That's pretty bad.
All right, we all set?
Yep.
Okay, that being said, sitting on the next, what was the last one was with you, Bob, right?
Yep, Charlie.
So the next one will be Charlie, four regular members and Charlie, and I believe the next Charlie that we read would be 73 Whipperwell.
Whipperwell.
It is. There you go.
73 Whipperwell Circle, owner Karen Ann Sejic, trustee of the Asti Revocable Trust, requests a written finding under 174-17, 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 156, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, owner of the property located at 73 Whipperwell Circle. They're seeking a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 to construct an approximate 565-square-foot garage on the eastern side of the property. This property is located wholly within the flood zone, so we have, for zoning purposes, zero square feet, which is a non-conforming condition, and we have 100% lot coverage due to it all being in the flood zone. We also have two other non-conformities, or three, because the wetland, the setback to wetland is a non-conformity. The setback from the road is less than your 40 feet, which is required in the R3 zoning district, and...because we're only 29.7 off of Whipperwell to the corner of the house, and then on the westerly side of the house, we're only 11.3 off the sides, the easterly sideline, I'm sorry, the westerly sideline, which is also a non-conforming condition. So again, what we're proposing is a garage on the westerly side of the structure, it will conform to your rear yard setback, your side yard setback, and your front yard setback. So we are 17.7 feet off the westerly sideline, which is conforming, we are 40, over 42 feet from the rear sideline, which is conforming, and we will be 49 feet off of the...off of Whipperwell Circle, which is also conforming. As a percentage of the total lot area, which is shown on this plan, so BSS has shown this on the plan, your lot coverage is 16.74%. If you take out the flood zone, you consider a total lot area, 16.74%. With the addition of the garage, we will be going to 19.89%, which is under the 20%, which is the max allowable in the R3 zoning district. So, the project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. The overall increase, net increase in coverage of structures is approximately 396 square feet, because we are also removing a shed off the property, which is only about a foot off the property line, so that shed is being removed. So when you take the shed out and include the garage, it's a net increase of about 396 square feet. But again, the garage itself will be completely conforming to your rear yard, your side yard, and your front yard setback, and if, again, as the board generally has done, where we deal with 100% lot coverage, when you look at the quote-unquote "old way," we're going from 16.74 to 19.89, which is less than 20%. And again, it's been approved by the Conservation Commission, we have substantial significant mitigation that's proposed, that's required by the...was required by the Conservation Commission. So overall, you know, we think that this is a project that does not create a situation that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists.
Any new non-conformities being created?
There are no new non-conformities being created.
Any non-conformities pre-existing increased?
A 50-foot setback, I guess, I would say, but we're completely within it, but we're adding structures.
Anything other than that?
No.
All right, Charlie, could you read into the record any of your letters, please?
73 Whipperwell Circle, Board of Health comments received 7/23/24. House will remain three-bedroom. In the main house, there is one bedroom on the first floor, one bedroom on the second floor, and then the third bedroom will be moved to above the garage. Loft on third floor cannot be considered a bedroom. Conservation Department comments, July 17th, 2024, for 73 Whipperwell Circle. Resource areas, buffer zone to BVW, buffer zone to Salt Marsh, and LSCSF. NOI permit application was approved with a vote of five to one for construction of attached garage, mitigation plantings, and planting of natives on town land. Garage area will be mitigated for by converting driveway sections into mitigation planting areas and planting natives' vegetation on abutting town land that will enhance the buffer zone to resource areas.
Anything else, Charlie?
Nothing else.
Nothing else. Board questions?
So was there a...at one time, the loft had a bed up there?
That I don't know, it's, you know, no...
I think when he's saying the loft, I think he's talking about the noof. I don't think he called it a loft.
It's an existing three-bedroom, and it's gonna stay three-bedroom.
Is there an existing loft?
Yeah, I think the house is a two-bedroom.
No, it's a three-bedroom. The septic size for three bedrooms.
You're adding a bedroom over the garage.
But we're removing one out of the house.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're taking one out.
It's not depicted on the plan.
But my question is, is there a loft down now?
I think he means this room here is...
The way it was written, it appears that there is a loft.
I think the studio is what he's calling the loft. Is this the homeowner?
Yes, this is the homeowner.
If you could give your name, sir, and it sounds like you want to answer the question.
Yeah, David Del Ponte, 73 Whipperwell Circle, I'm the husband of Karen Sejic, and the loft that's being referred to exists outside of the main bedroom on the second floor of the house. It can't be used as a bedroom because it's completely open away with just a railing to the main part of the house on the first floor, which is open, kind of a cathedral ceiling type thing. That's the loft that's being referred to. Under the new construction, on second floor, the first floor, of course, will be a garage, the second floor, half of the space will be the third bedroom, which is being relocated from the main house. That bedroom that's being relocated from the main house, that space will become a mudroom, within which will be the entrance to the garage and the stairway up to the second floor of the addition. The other half of the addition, second floor addition, will be just a, I don't know, like a studio kind of sewing thing. My wife is a big sewer, and so she can use that for a sewing studio.
You can't call it just...you can't call it a bedroom, I think David would agree, because to walk through that studio, you have to walk through that room to get to the bedroom. It doesn't create privacy, so I think that's... you have to walk through that room to get to the bedroom. It doesn't create privacy, so I think that's the way Board of Health determines that. It's wide open, I see the railing, the stairs to that mudroom, so the mudroom, as long as there's no door at the bottom of that mudroom, that studio is separate, it's, it's like one, the mudroom, the stairs up to that studio is kind of one room, it's all open. So you wouldn't be able to add a door there. According to this plan, that's the way it's drawn, and I would look at it as not a bedroom.
So you satisfied with this answer?
I'm satisfied with this answer and the plan.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, any other board questions?
No?
Any other board questions? All right, so let's go out to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any input or questions in reference to the application? Seeing on David?
I have no issues.
Okay, so, any other board questions, one more time?
I have none.
Motion to close, then.
I'll make the motion to close.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion in reference to the application.
Motion relative to seventy-three Whipperwell Circle. Owner Karen Ann Sejek, trustee of the Asti Revocable Trust, requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R three zoning district map one two five, parcel one five six, Mashby, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws forty A, section six. Number two, plot plan. Seventy-three Whipperwell Circle, Mashby, Mass, prepared for David Del Ponte and Karen Sejek. Scale one inch equals twenty feet, date May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Prepared by BSS Design, stamped and signed by Thomas J. Bunker. Number three. Building plans, prepared for Del Ponte, residence seventy-three Whipperwell Circle, Mashby, Mass, issued January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Scale one quarter inch equals one foot. A dash one point O, proposed floor plans. A dash two point O, proposed elevations. A dash three point O, proposed sections. FN one dash zero, proposed elevations. FR one point zero, proposed floor plans, prepared by Kraus Architecture, West Falmouth, Mass. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including, but not limited to, the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds that the proposed project under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator Latch.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's up there? Who's up? Charlie? Come so many of this? She's supposed to keep you busy. Two more to go?
Uh, two more, there's Cordwood and Pond Street.
What is this?
Give it back.
It's coming back.
Going that way, not that way.
Now it's coming back.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be able to date it.
I checked it.
Going counterclockwise.
Okay. So I think the last one was, you were on, Charlie?
I was.
Okay, so for this one, four regular members, and Bob? So Charlie, would you read the rest, the next one, thirty-two Cordwood Road, into the record, please?
Okay, thirty-two Cordwood Road. Owner Joseph M. Donovan requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R three in the Papaneset Overlay District, map one one eight, parcel one, Mashby, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Joe Donovan, owner of thirty-two Cordwood Road. Thirty-two Cordwood Road, as noted in the, the hearing notice, is located in the Papaneset Overlay District, which requires six thousand square feet of lot area, sixty feet of frontage, twenty-five foot front yard setback, fifteen foot rear side, rear and side yard setbacks. So we are seeking a special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one, which is your raise and replace bylaw. So this lot is a seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one square foot lot. There are, I'm happy to say, there are no flood zone impacts to this lot. It is all upland. So the lot is conforming at seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one square feet, and there is over sixty foot, feet of frontage along Cordwood Road here, and then this road here to the north. So we have two front yard setbacks and two rear yard setbacks. So lot size and frontage is conforming. We have three non-conformities. We are only eleven feet from this road up here. We are only fourteen feet from the rear yard setback to the way, the road, and our lot coverage is non-conforming at twenty-six point four percent. So those are our three non-conformities, so front yard setback, rear yard setback, and, and the lot coverage. So this project will reduce the lot coverage to twenty-four, twenty-four point five percent. So we are making the project smaller and becoming conforming as to your lot coverage. So we're going from twenty-six percent to twenty-four percent. We are also eliminating the rear yard setback, so, which is now approximately fourteen feet, will become conforming at fifteen feet. We are improving the non-conformity here, which is eleven, eleven feet, and we're going to fifteen feet, so there's an improvement there. So eliminating two non-conformities, improving the third non-conformity. We are also installing an IA septic system, so that's an improvement over what is existing, and it will be building code compliant. We will have dry wells, and there are no, no increase in the bedroom count, there are no new non-conformities being created, and we're not intensifying any existing non-conformity, so everything's an improvement. So we're either, we're eliminating two non-conformities, we're improving one non-conformity, we're putting in the IA system, we're becoming building code compliant, and this, this project is certainly consistent with redevelopment in the, in the Papaneset Overlay District.
Charlie, would you read in the record any of the letters, please?
I will.
Thank you, Chris.
We have Board of Health comment, relative to thirty-two Cordwood Road, received seven twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Board of Health, no comment, to remain three-bedroom with the addition of an IA septic system, Mashby, one thousand foot IA regulations. Conservation Department comment, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, relative to thirty-two Cordwood Road, not within wetlands jurisdiction.
Any other letters, Charlie?
Nothing else.
Okay, board comments, please. What may that be?
How do we, because they haven't seen us in a while, I noticed on the second floor, there's a cantilever.
Yep.
Do we count that? Is there a, a section, like a footage that we have to count as lot coverage of a second floor cantilevers?
Two feet, is it?
Boss?
Is it over, do you know?
It's two feet.
Two feet.
For a deck. Is, is it a roof?
It's not a deck, it's the second floor is extending, right?
So...
It's extending past the first floor, somewhere around two feet.
Yeah, they, they, yeah, that doesn't count towards lot coverage, because that's the deck. What, if it's two feet? Roof, the roof can extend to four feet.
Yeah, the roof, I know, it's the second, it's the deck of the second floor is extending, I don't think it's going two feet.
Yeah, it can go two feet.
Okay.
It's just, it's just, that, that would be not lot, lot coverage.
I just wanted to declare that that was there and the lot coverage is good.
Any other questions by the board?
I would, I just want to note one more thing that I didn't pick up, and sometimes it's important to the board. There is a shed here that's only like one foot off, that's being removed, so that's being taken out too, so another positive for this project.
And it's, and it's figured in the lot coverage that that's been being removed?
Yes, yes.
Anyone in the audience have anything in reference to this application to state? Questions? Okay. Mr. Morris?
I have no issues at all.
No issues. Going to go back to board questions. Anybody in the board have any questions?
Nothing.
Okay. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Make that motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in reference to the application, please?
Got it right here. Make a motion relative to thirty-two Cordwood Road. Owner Joseph M. Donovan requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R three in the Papaneset Overlay District. Map one one eight, parcel one, Mashby, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws forty A, section nine. Number two, site plan, prepared for Joseph M. Donovan, thirty-two Cordwood Road, Mashby, Mass. Sheet number one of one, date May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, scale one inch equals twenty feet. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb, number four five nine three seven, and Matt Costa, number five two two eight two. Building plans, prepared for Donovan residence, thirty-two Cordwood Road, Mashby, Mass. Scale one quarter inch equals one foot. Prepared by K Marshall Works Design, sheet one of ten. A dash one, foundation plan and details. A dash two, first floor plan. A dash three, second floor plan. A dash four, exterior elevations. A five, exterior elevations. A six, cross-sections. Number four, conditioned on all town department, comments read into the record, including, but not limited to, the Board of Health and Conservation Department. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter one seventy-five, of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under one seventy-four seventeen point one that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the exist, pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Just one of those.
Isn't that nice? That was a little change.
I think we'll come to the front. Yeah, it's confirmed.
Okay, so I think the last, next thing on the agenda, actually, four regular members and Charlie. Four Pond Street, if you'd like to read that in the record, please.
Owners Samuel Peter Deloy and Patricia Jean Deloy request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R three in the Papaneset Overlay District. Map one one seven, parcel two five seven, Mashby, Mass.
Counselor? Good evening, again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. I requested a continuance of this hearing to August fourteenth, because we're going to conservation tomorrow night. So we haven't been through conservation yet, and it's required.
And I have Attorney Corain's letter right here.
Could you read that, please?
Date of July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to Ron Bonvy, Chairman, relative to Four Pond Street. As you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing schedule for July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four be continued until August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicants will not be heard by the Conservation Commission until July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Very truly yours, Chris Corain.
And it was dated the actual extension date? Okay, so I'd like to get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the request of Attorney Corain to continue it to, when? August fourteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have any topics, so why don't we just wait a second? Chris can sign that document, and we can... Get a motion to close it down?
This is great.
Yeah, it is.
Totally great.
Very nice.
Organized. So organized, Mary Ann.
Yeah. Mary Ann, this was, this was great.
I'm not going to put them back in the order that they were in there, though.
Send down your name tag.
I did get the date right, so don't even say it. Don't even say it.
Even though everybody's passing, there's something.
It's almost twenty-four, two, twenty-four, twenty-four.
I know, I know. So that's what I was saying to myself, too.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Night, everyone.
Were you just, were you just listening to our meeting to learn?